Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, municipal, liberty, and justice for all.
Role.
Graham Cassoon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Summers, absent. Witt.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Correspondents.
We have correspondents from the Glennon Law Firm. It is in response to Time Warner's Cable Charter Communications Letter dated September 6, 2016.
Received and filed.
We received a letter for a public hearing from the S.L.A. on September 23rd for the Equilibrium Grill Brewery.
Board of Corporation Council.
That is all for correspondence.
For the good of the city, Mayor.
Good evening. Since 1961, the Conference of Mayors, of which the City of Middletown belongs to, has annually honored public officials who have served a single community for 25 years or more by awarding them a certificate of public service. The privilege of presenting the actual certificate is reserved for each municipality, therefore affording the City of Middletown and others the opportunity to extend recognition and appreciation to the individual officials with whatever formality we may consider. We are doing it in the form of a presentation of certificates. The Conference of Mayors is pleased to acknowledge the service of these dedicated individuals and along with many other municipalities, the City of Middletown has chosen to honor these individuals tonight, and we join with the Common Council, I join with the Common Council and the residents of the City of Middletown in honoring these dedicated public employees who have served the City of Middletown for 25 years or more. So what I'd like to do, Mr. President, if you would come down and we can recognize the, each individual as they come up. Sergeant Mark Doty, in recognition of 30 years of distinguished public service to your community. Shawn Reisert. I don't think Shawn is here. Harry Willis. Wayne Skinner, 25 years as a Middletown fireman. Randy Banks. And last is Rosario Mastria. That's Rosario. Rosario, 25 years. And we'll make sure that the other recipients receive theirs through their supervisor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Catherine McMenamy, and I still live at 19 Willow Place in the City of Middletown. I am here this evening, I am here this evening with a note of enormous gratitude for the mayor, for Mr. Jacob Tawell and his staff. They have started to put culverts on either side of the railroad tracks behind Willow Place and the apartments on the other side. They've looked like they have finished the culverts on Chestnut, and I hope to follow will be the culverts on Birch. The culverts, the old ones, as they were removed, were horrific. I mean rusted through, they were in bad shape. And now when I see what the city has done, putting in these new culverts with what looks like, and we hope to God will be adequate drainage in any future rain events, will help to alleviate some of the water problems we have out there. But again, I say, thank you very much. It's been a long time coming, and I am happy to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Lou Dietrich, 14 Chestnut Street. I wanted to say the pedestrian crossings on North Street are fantastic. Someone actually stopped for me today as I was crossing over to Something Sweet. I was thrilled. And I'm going to ask if there could possibly be one on the top of the hill as you're going up Highland Crossing West Main, because there's a crosswalk all there. It's all drawn, but the cars will come around me as I am crossing Highland Avenue there. So I would really very much appreciate it if we could have a sign right there on that corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, reports of department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. Just to report on the Community Development Agency, three of the homes that I reported at the last meeting are going to be in the paper tomorrow for bid, for contractors to bid on them. So tomorrow they're going to hit the papers, so we're moving on three of the properties. Also, we're working on a couple small business loans in our department, housing rehab through our CDBG. Please call us to see if you qualify for a housing rehab loan or grant. Also, on the Paramount front, this weekend, our classic movie series begins, and the first movie is King Kong. It's at 1 o'clock this Saturday. We have a new live show on sale, Big Shot, and it's Billy Joel, the music of Billy Joel, and that's November 19th. And don't forget about our Horror-Thon Weekend at the Paramount, and that's going to be Halloween weekend. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Chief of Police?
I have nothing this evening unless you have questions for me.
Question for the chief? Thank you, chief. D.P.W. Commissioner?
Good evening, all. As you can see, City Hall roof replacement has started. They've done some of the asbestos abatement and half of the demolition of the roof. There are some field condition we have to take care of, and that project hopefully will be moving forward to completion very soon. Sterling Street sewer project has started with clearing of trees from the easement, and that's from Grand Street all the way to Sterling Street. Regarding the culverts around, by the railroad in Amshire area, we've done Chestnut. Now we're waiting for delivery of the culverts to finish Birch Drive culverts. Also, we met with the county D.P.W., and they agreed to take ownership of the larger culvert that will be installed across County Route 78 by a private developer. And now we're just in the process of resolving the issue of easements and permits between the county and the railroad, so that will be done as well. And that project will be sorted very soon for Mr. Mandelbaum, that work, workforce. Thank you, Mayor, workforce housing. Do you have any questions for me?
Any question for the D.P.W. Commissioner? Al MacLeiner?
Same question again. Any progress on the New York Rising?
New York Rising, the mayor, myself, and the representative of the governor, and their consultant, state consultant, we met. We're still negotiating the price of how much the consultants that were selected are going to be charging, and we're still going back and forth, unfortunately. We just met two weeks ago, Mayor, with them, about two weeks ago. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jacob.
Good evening. Summer's over, so you think we're slowing down, and it seems and feels opposite. So our department and our building are happily busy. Preschool did start last week. We have two full classes. We have a waiting list in both the morning and the afternoon. Stop by, see our new library, the new cubbies, the new classrooms. The teachers have done a great job getting ready, and all those items have been donated, so it didn't cost us a cent. Kids were all smiles, and parents had a few tears, but it was a very successful start to the school year. Boxing continues to grow. We're going to have to expand into another room on the third floor to accommodate all the kids that are signing up. It's another great program. If you haven't had a chance to see that boxing and fitness gym that's been done up there, again, come check it out, and again, most of it all done with donations. This weekend was the martial arts competition at the community center. We had a full house there Saturday and Sunday, easily over 1,000 people through the door. The promoters were very happy with the building and very happy with our helpful staff, so that was very successful. There was a youth basketball shootout at Beatty Hill Park on Saturday that was sponsored by Kingdom Sports, and I kind of want to, it was free to all the contestants, and I want to give a shout out to Seneca King, the barber shop, and all his buddies that donated their time. Music, Army was down there, lots of prizes for the kids, all free. Nice neighborhood event, lots of kids down there. We're waiting to hear what allocations we're getting for the 2017 grant application we gave the Orange County Youth Bureau. This year, we have requested a little over $50,000. Some of it will go towards the summer feeding program, some to the teen center that we get every year, and I had to add the numbers up for the teen center. We have had over 1,100 different kids through the teen center door this year, so far. I was just there before I came here. It's a school night, there's 40, 45 kids down there playing, so that's good stuff. The rest of the money is for that summer leadership academy that we do for incoming freshmen. To keep it short, all our fall programs are done, registration's over, they're all up and running. We have over 160 in cheerleading and soccer alone, so that's a great thing. The public has been asking about the winter registrations. We will start them the end of next month. We have a new program, it's called Toddlers in Training, so we're going to get the little guys in the gym doing some stuff. We have youth volleyball. We also have adult volleyball coming back. There'll be an adult volleyball league. Indoor soccer, and our already successful basketball and cheerleading program, which is for ages four through 12, which is held at our building. This Saturday is the Touch a Truck. The Touch a Truck is from 11 to 1 over at the Farmer's Market. If you stop outside City Hall on the police station, you'll see the scarecrows were put out today. All the different businesses and organizations have made scarecrows, and the winners of the scarecrow contest will be mentioned at the Harvest Fest on October 22nd. Our first annual City of Middletown Downtown Scavenger Hunt will be held on Saturday, October 15th. Nikki's put a whole lot of work into that, along with the Historical Society, and I know Jerry Kleiner's been a part of that. You can pre-register your team with the Recreation Department by Friday, October 7th, and team entries are $25 for a team of five. And Nikki's made up a nice little passport book. It's going to be a great event. I see that being very successful and a moneymaker down the line to raise money for different things we would need. All this information can be found in our Fall, Winter, and Spring brochure. You can get them in our office, you can get them here in City Hall. It's also on the website, and we also have all this information on our Facebook page. Lastly, I'd like to mention that Middletown Cares will be hosting the St. Louis Rams Super Bowl champion Roland Williams as a motivational speaker on Thursday, September 29th. His presentation is called Turn Your Worst Into First. He will speak about failure, adversity, and rejection, and how it is a journey to his success. He will be speaking during the day at the high school to high school students, and then in the evening, there'll be a presentation for the community and parents to attend. Anybody wanting more information can contact Middletown Cares, Kelly Ocasio. She will be getting that out on social media, and I'm hoping to get it on the school website as well. The skate park has not been forgotten. Final decisions are being made with the contractors and the city's goals to have a shovel in the ground come spring. And just lastly, with the budget season coming, we really need to take a look at the playground equipment at Maple Hill Park. It's becoming a safety issue and hitting, I think it's 28 years old. So that's all I have tonight.
Okay, any question for Chris? Thank you, Chris.
Good evening. Want to address a couple of things. One frontier was mentioned, communication from Peter Glennon. They sent me, we've been waiting for the revised contract, just got that. So I'm in the process of reviewing that. I'm hoping to have a recommendation to the Board of Estimate, you know, by end of the month or early October. If any of you want to see a copy of the contract, just shoot me an email, and I will send it on to you for your review as well, if you'd like. Second, I'd like to address the last item on the agenda that may be familiar to you because it should be. This is the Tompkins Building. You already had approved a letter of intent, and you'd authorized the mayor to sign the contract and closing documents. The successful proposer had been working through some things as far as dates and financing and all, so they're still committing to the substance of what has already been approved, but they wanted an adjustment of some of the dates. And also, in talking with them about potential IDA financing, they had to restructure the proposal a little bit because there's, with the IDA, you can get IDA financing, but no more than one-third of a project can be retail. So we restructured the letter of intent to say that they can, you know, they will develop the property using, you know, with a use that is allowed under the C-3 zone. But they're still committing to put in, as you know, from the letter of intent, up to $4 million into the project for a building that's been sitting there for quite some time. And this is just the latest in the series of buildings that we've done this with, and you all know where they are downtown, and they've been pretty successful so far. So the purpose of the resolution is to approve the revised letter of intent, approve the contract of sale that is attached to that, and the original proposer wants to assign the contract rights to a group that actually has an antique and a very successful business down in Georgia, which is intending to relocate up here. And so that would be consistent with all that. So that's the whole purpose of that resolution, and I would urge you to pass it because we are ready to close that. And that'll be good to get that out of our hands and into the private development sector. Don't know if you have any questions, but if you do, I'll be happy to take them, and I'll say, welcome back, Mr. Massey.
Any questions for Corporation Council? Thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
No, I have nothing this evening.
Any question for John? Thank you. Public hearings.
Okay, we have two public hearings tonight. One is to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program. I'll read the notice of public hearing that was in the newspaper. Notice is hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 20th, 2016, on or as near 8:00 p.m. as possible, Common Council Chamber, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against a proposed resolution. This is by the order of the Common Council, and it was published in the Times-Herald Record on September 14th and September 15th, and also on the city website.
Okay, at this time, a public hearing is open. Any members from the public who would like to speak? Any members on council who would like to speak? All right. Motion to close? So.
Second.
Massey, second, Al MacLeiner, Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing's closed.
The second public hearing is to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on a proposed nine-lot subdivision for Highland Hills LLC, Section 1, Block 1, Lot 62 through 24 and 82. I'll read the public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 20th, 2016, on or as near 8:00 p.m. as possible, Common Council Chamber, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on a proposed nine-lot subdivision for the Highland Hills LLC, Section 1, Block 1, Lot 16 through 24 and 82. A full copy of the nine-lot subdivision for Highland Hills LLC, but the plans is available in the City Clerk's office, Room 12, City Hall, 16 James Street, Middletown, New York. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against a proposed amendment, and this was the order of the Common Council. This was published in the Times-Herald Record on September 11th and September 12th, and on the city website. And also, we did receive the information from the county. Tom, you'll mention that, and also, for the record, you have the mailings. Okay, thank you.
At this time, a public hearing is open?
All right, just give a brief presentation. This project was originally approved in 2007. We're just looking to reposition these lots in this area here. We originally had a dead-end cul-de-sac. There was some intent at that time about maybe extending that road out to Maples Road at some time, but due to the large wetland constraint that we got there, I don't see that ever happening. So what we want to do is reposition those lots. We're not creating any more residential lots, but we're repositioning them, and I want to create a larger stormwater parcel. Due to the changes in the stormwater management rules and regulations, I actually needed a little more land to develop that pond. We had it designed originally, but as we progress with the project, we're going to meet the new criteria for the stormwater pond. So basically, we are not creating any more residential lots, we're just consolidating an area, because we had two separate little stormwater areas. We're consolidating it into one large area, and we're still remaining, we're repositioning six residential lots, but we're not creating any other, any additional residential lots. It's just a reconfiguration, and it's to give us more area to develop the stormwater
Just repeat the, maybe they can answer the mic as we're being televised.
Jacob had asked when the retaining wall, we have a large retaining wall that's going to run along the edge of the wetlands, and that will be constructed prior to us, or about the same time when we're developing the overall site, so.
Could you just turn it around so we can see it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is the original.
Motion, motion, okay. Jesus.
And then, as I said, that was the cul-de-sac in that area there, and alls we're doing is we're taking, not creating any more residential lots, we're just repositioning them, and it gives me a larger area to develop. Gives a larger area to develop the stormwater, stormwater management in that area.
Good evening. Mark Cool, representing Coole's and Allseas and Self Storage. We had a large rainfall about three, four weeks ago, and the back end of this property where they're building the last couple houses, that hill was saturated with water, and it was like a small stream coming down off that. So whatever we have or they have in their plans of, you know, runoff, we need to address that more, that concern more, because it just came down and basically flooded the lower part of our storage area that way. So I don't know now how this is going to affect anything that way, but that water needs to be redirected somehow that it's not falling down off the side of that hill.
Tom, is it a retention pond?
Yes, actually, I know his concern and part of this.
I think, I think it was addressed with Walt somehow. I don't know where we stand with that.
Okay.
Yeah, we had to evaluate. Part of this is, when they complete the project, that water will be redirected down to this bigger pond we're proposing. What happens is that that road is going to drop off, and then all that stormwater that got caught in that one corner, it got caught in the corner and then went down to your property.
Just so we're on record that we know there was an issue with that, then that's, you know, properly taken care of. Appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. Anyone else from the public? Any members from the council? Al MacLeiner? Yeah, just to piggyback on that concern, I know you say, when it's completed, we will take care of that, and we will redirect that, or you will redirect that water. What happens in the interim from now until the completion, and how long of a completion? I mean, are we talking weeks, months, years? Because in the interim, we can obviously have more rain.
Yeah. Actually, they want, as soon as, as soon as we're done with this part of the reconfiguration, they want to start work right away. We will be held up till about October 15th because of, we can't do any clearing and grubbing till the bat, well, basically, the bat season's over, so basically, they'll be looking to start that work about October the 15th. And we have done some remedial work in that area to, you know, prevent that from happening in the future.
We're not looking a year down.
No, 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 they want to start. They actually want to start. But I told them they can't start any clearing and grubbing due to the Indiana bat situation.
How far are you from completion of the total project? Would you like to dedicate the road back?
They're probably looking, what they want to do is they want to do it in two more sections, so this part that's going to develop the stormwater area is going to be the first section. They want to start that work and have all those lots ready for construction in the early summer of next year. They actually got contracts on like 10 or 12 lots down in that area, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the council? Al MacLeiner?
Yes, I know, I mean, when we looked at this in committee, and most everything you're doing seemed like it was going to be an improvement from what it was. I know the county made some recommendations about having less impervious area and using other materials. Are you considering that at all, or?
Well, actually, the project, because it does away with that piece of cul-de-sac, actually reduces the amount impervious, and we're going to look at maybe fitting some bio-retention like they suggested behind the curb line, mainly in that, that area down where we are repositioning it. The problem we run into in that, right where they want you to do is where O&R wants to put all their utilities too, so we usually have a problem, we usually got to squeeze our way through in order to implement some of that stuff. But if we have the possibility, we will implement that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Al MacLeiner, Francois?
Yeah, as far as the retaining wall, is that going to be the first phase of the project? Is that going to be built in the first phase or the last phase of the project?
It will, will actually be built in both phases. Part of the first phase needs a retaining wall, and then the remaining part, so. These, these four lots here will need the retaining wall, and then this is the retaining wall for the rest.
So that's the first phase?
Yeah, that's the first phase, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to close? Al MacLeiner. Massey, second by Al MacBurr, all in favor? Aye. Public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Remarks to the mayor?
As the city treasurer, Don Paris, mentioned at the last meeting, we have begun the budget process, and all of the submissions are in, we're being reviewed on. My office will begin with the Board of Estimate hearings very shortly. Of course, the council will be notified, invited to attend the actual budget hearings with the department heads, and I will tell you that, of course, as usual, the requests come in much more, much higher than the revenue increases. So we have some cutting to do, but one big expense that I can tell you this year is in the state employment, the state health insurance program, which the middle figure of, or the low figure of projected increase is about 11%, which will run about $325,000 to $350,000 for the city just on that one line. That doesn't take into consideration pay increases and utility increases and other insurance increases, workman's comp increases. So that's a pretty large nut to crack right off the bat. So we will be, of course, looking to make some significant cuts in budget requests. Our goal, of course, is not to impact services. We haven't got into the budget deep enough to know, Don will be presenting that to us, how many new requests for employees, how many vacancies are being requested, and where our large-ticket items are. So we'll be scheduling, probably not for next week, but the week after, the Board of Estimate hearings with department heads, and you're welcome to not only attend, but participate in the hearings. Rich touched on the Tompkins project, and that is a big, big project for us based on the projected investment into the building and the fact that it will be, have a retail component of up to one-third of the building. And we're focusing on getting that building repurposed. As you know, part of our grant applications was not on demolishing buildings, was repurposing buildings, and we've had a lot of success in that area, and we're looking forward to your support on that vote this evening. One last item is that, Chris touched on it, was the Martial Arts Expo at the Academy Avenue School this past weekend. It was an international final with contestants from all over the world, Australia, Europe. I think half the contestants were scattered throughout the U.S. It was very well attended. I know hotels were filled up into Port Jervis. They had buses, people, bringing people in by bus from Port Jervis area, and hopefully, it's an event that will be repeated in the Middletown area. And it was filmed. filmed for some martial arts TV show. So we'll, we'll provide you with the information so when it's reviewed, you know, if you're, if you're interested in martial arts, I know that Alderman Massey is, that will.
Be nice.
Marilla arts, not martial arts.
Nice. It was close.
I missed, I had the spelling wrong. But the, but we're pretty proud of the fact that Chris and Maria, mostly the rec department, Maria I know coordinated, and I was out of town at the opening and closing ceremonies, but the rec department and John Bianchi did an excellent job accommodating their needs, and they were very, as you know, with a TV production, very, very pushy in, in a positive way, but it all went well and was very, very well attended. And that's all I have, if, unless you have any questions.
Question for the mayor? Mayor, going back to the 2% cap, can you let, last year, the 2% cap was technically like 1.16%?
Yeah, the 2% cap is not a 2% cap. The 2% cap is adjusted for inflation. I believe this year, we're looking at less than, I think it's around 0.6%. So a little over half of 1%. The, at the same time, you know, there are, we haven't received the sales tax revenue projection increase, but there, there are some serious budgetary issues that we're going to have to address as we do every year, as listing priorities and trying to enhance revenue. So, but it's, the 2% cap is not really a 2% cap. And as you know, I'm a supporter of the 2% cap, but I think the state also has to do some more relief, mandate relief, so that we can then have tighter control over, over our budget operations. So it's not all our fault. And NYSIP is a state-run program also, where, with the health insurance. And you know, a few years ago, we, we were looking to open that up, that would result in a pretty significant savings, and, and the, the unions would not go along with that, and they exercised their right in their contracts to not allow us to switch carriers. But, you know, at some point, you know, things are changing, they're changing slowly with, as far as state of government comes, but, or goes, but we are trying to make, we have a responsibility locally to make those changes, and, and whatever we can within, within, within the law, of course.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Any question for mayor? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Remarks to Alderman, Alderman Massey?
Chris, on your adult volleyball, do you think you could institute a senior level, and I'd be happy to come down? I just want to say to the mayor and to the council president and the council, thank you for taking such good care of Middletown while I was gone. I appreciate it.
Alderman Burr?
Just want to give a shout out to Chris, and I'm not feeling well myself, but for all the great, thank you, Jeff, the great job you're doing, Chris, and our kids and youths really enjoy everything you do. Thank you.
Alderman Ray Kasun?
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize the fire department. I was able to attend the white hat party and inspection night, but I was unable to attend the parade due to lack of childcare. But I just wanted to give them a shout out tonight, and I'd like to congratulate all the award winners, and once again, take the opportunity to thank our firefighters for their service to our community. And it was a hot day, so I'm glad everyone ended out of there. So my thanks to them. Brink, rec, what can I say? That's all, there's, if you have a kid who doesn't have anything to do, you're not going to the right place because in Middletown, we offer everything, and I really appreciate your hard work there in expanding all our programs. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
I would also agree that the fireman's parade is part of the glue that keeps us all together. It's a, it's a great opportunity, and for sure, the parks department rocks. Thank you.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize close to 5,000 people who attended that Middletown-Port-Jervis football game, won by the middies, 42 to nothing. It's great to see that, you know, that it still means something to people. You had folks from all ages, and, and everybody comes back, and it's, and it's important to this community, and sometimes there are things that, there are not a lot of things left that still are maybe that have been around for a long time, and that's not necessarily a bad thing, but it's.
I do, you were going to say that.
What's that? There you go, right? Now, that's, that was good. That was very good. But no, it was just good to see that, that people came out because you can be away for, I know they, they recognized the 55-year reunion class there, so it was important enough for them to incorporate that in part of their day, so. And following that up with the traditions, you know, the firefighters' parade the next day is wonderful. I know that we're certainly not the draw for people to come out and watch this thing by any stretch, but it's great to see folks still lining the streets just like they did when I was a kid, and, and getting to see, you know, honoring our firefighters and our guests, and it's just, it's just a really nice day. So it's always an honor to be a part of that, for sure. And thanks to Commissioner Toewill for coming out to our constituents' meeting the other night. That was a great help and a nice opportunity for our people to get to speak with you. So thank you very much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you, and thank you to the fire department. The parade was great. I believe there were more people out this year than in the last few years, so thank you to the public for coming out and supporting the parade, and, and congratulations to former chief Tommy Amadeo, who is grand marshal, and thanks to Art Livesey, who gave the play-by-play from the reviewing stand. He always does a great job. So it, it was a terrific event. It was also terrific to see the diversity of people out on the street in Middletown and show you what, what a culturally diverse and, and wonderful city Middletown is. And in that vein, also, congratulations to the middies, no matter what else happens this season, injuries and such, but you're really rocked getting the Erie Bell back. And again, that, that crowd of people was an amazing mix of people, an amazing group. And finally, congratulations to the YMCA. They had the ribbon cutting and opening for their new swimming pool, and it is something else to see, so if you get a chance, go see it. Thank you.
Alderman John Francois?
Yes, thank you. I also want to apologize for not attending the fireman's parade this year. I was out of town due to a family emergency. Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Okay, new business.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to transfer a total of $1,500 within the 2016 operating budget of the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department to purchase an enclosed trailer from the town of Waukega to transfer, transport mowers and equipment to various parks.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Massey, and discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to transfer a total of $700 within the 2016 operating budget of the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department to cover overages on chlorine deliveries due to the extremely hot summer and high usage of our pools.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Ray Kasun, any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to transfer a total of $7,332.50 for the former TD Bank building for additional work done by Clark Patterson Lee.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Ray Kasun, any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kasun to accept $500 donation from Hudson Valley Credit Union in support of city's neighborhood watch program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kasun, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the mayor to sign a financial advisory service agreement with Capital Markets Advisor LLC for the period of September 1st through December 15th, 2017.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize Kelly Osseo and Nicole DiStefano of the Middletown Cares Coalition to travel to the annual New York State Youth Borough Development Conference in Lake Placid, New York from Monday, October 24th through Wednesday, October 26th, 2016, and this travel is funded through the grant.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman John Francois, any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ray Kasun, any discussion?
Alderman Kleiner?
I just want to mention, because I had a couple of people ask me about this, and it's, it's apply for the grant to remove the rubble from the building that burned on the psych center and to help with clearing the sites. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the mayor to sign an engagement letter with Oric Harrington and Scliff LLC.
Sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt to authorize Lieutenant Gregory Metakis to attend the annual gift symposium to be held in Saratoga Springs, New York from Wednesday, November 30th through Thursday, December 1st, 2016, and this is a properly budgeted item.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $10,466 within the DPW 2016 budget to fund four projects for the city.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to authorize the mayor to sign a proposal from Quality Environmental Solutions and Technologies to provide abatement monitoring services for the roof at City Hall and transfer $5,000 to fund the project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Massey, any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to authorize Jacob Toewill, Commissioner of Public Works, to attend the WEF conference in New Orleans from September 25th, 2016 through September 28th, 2016, and this is a properly budgeted item.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by, do I have a second? Alderman Johnson. Sorry, Jacob. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Got your back. Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?